Good evening. I have six o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is July 11th. It's a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. As we always do, to start off with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Now, if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak. Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Plank is absent, and Commissioner Gross.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Item number five on the agenda is correspondence this evening. We have one, two, three, four pieces of court correspondence. One from Marion County, one from Branch County, one from Eaton County, and one from Calcasas County. Looking for a motion to receive and place on file.
So moved Griffith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Item number six is call to the public. This is our first of two call to the publics. The first one, citizens will have three minutes to present information they feel is of importance to the Board of Commissioners. Just a reminder, it's your opportunity to present information. It's not intended to be a two-way conversation. So if you wanted to speak here in the room, you should have given the clerk card with your name and contact information. And so I asked Clerk Conley, who's up first?
Jason Ringatt with Brighton Township.
And by the way, I'll say you have 15 seconds left when you have 15 seconds left.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Hello, Board of Commissioners. The Livingston County Health Department, Livingston County Superintendent of Public Schools, went rogue of the school year 21, 22, violating our kids' U.S. constitutional rights, violating their rights under the First Amendment, Fourth, Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments, the Guarantee Clause of the federal status of the regulations, civil rights, state laws, federal laws, and their due process to the public education, as well as forcing illegal mask mandates and healthy quarantines in Livingston County schools. In April 2021, the state of Michigan stopped emergency mandates. How much further has Livingston County school kids falling behind in their education due to reckless, illegal, healthy quarantines, mask mandates that the Health Department and school superintendents impose on our children? With no peer-reviewed replicated studies to back up their reckless actions to show that masks and healthy quarantines work? The Health Department pushed their recommendations, mandates, guidelines onto the schools, pushing our children to wear masks and healthy quarantines that have caused suffering, depression, isolation, physical, psychological, sociological harm to our children, imposed pain, suffering, and humiliation on students, inhibited speech, and damaged their health. There are currently 169 studies mixed with peer-reviewed replicated studies that masks do not work, nor do they stop COVID transmissions. I made a four-year request to Ms. McCormick and Dr. Marquez stating, I requesting all medical scientific peer-reviewed replicated studies of evidence on how masks stop kids and adults from transmitting COVID virus to each other by wearing masks. Heartland Schools, from September 21 until 2022, Diane McCormick and Dr. Marquez, who runs the Livingston County Health Department, gave recommendations to Superintendent Chuck Hughes and the Heartland School Board of Heartland Consolidated Schools in Livingston County to mask Heartland School kids and staff during September 21 through January 2022. Guess what? They have no evidence that masks work stopping people from getting or transferring the COVID virus. I handed each of you guys evidence that when I did a four-year request, they have no evidence, and it's right in front of you. So why would anybody on the Commissioners Board rubber stamp Diane McCormick's recommendations when she's incompetent? And what she imposed the crap on my kids of all the psychological and abuse on my children and other childrens in Heartland Schools? I have spoken to Commissioner meetings, school board meetings, and emailed the Health Department Commissioners and School Board members in Livingston County, educating all of you, masks do not work, masks do not stop the spread of the COVID virus. The PCR test cannot pick up the COVID virus. The COVID jab spreads the COVID virus. Guess what? I've been right, and the so-called medical experts, Diane McCormick and Dr. Marquez, so-called medical experts have been wrong time after time after time again. Board of Commissioners, please hire a person with a medical degree who follows science and not politics. So please do not listen to Diane McCormick or Dr. Marquez. Go find somebody that follows science. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle Herbert from Genoa Township.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate what the gentleman before me said. I totally agree with every statement that he made. And I would encourage you to do an exhaustive search. I mean, you just, I mean, you work at a bank. You wouldn't just take the next person just because they're there, you know, and it's easiest. So it's like you need, this is an important position with midterms coming up. You know, their monkeypox is going to be out, whatever other thing, marbury, whatever new thing they come up with is going to be coming up front and center. We need somebody that can use some common sense. So I just want to reiterate that this is an important position. It needs to have an exhaustive search, not just take the easiest way out because you're either friends with them, you know them, or Diane recommended them. Again, I don't know that I would trust her judgment based on what we've been doing the last two years. So just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other cards received, so I'll close the call to the public here and look for Zoom if there's anybody on Zoom. Use the Zoom raise your hand feature, and you'll have three minutes. I don't see anybody.
I do not see any either, Commissioner.
All right. Now, I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public and remind citizens that there's a second call to the public at the end of the meeting, but that one is two minutes in duration rather than three. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have this evening two sets of minutes. Meeting minutes dated June 27th and a work session also dated June 27th. I'm looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes. Motion Smith.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item number eight is tabled items from previous meetings. We do have one tabled item that was the resolution to establish a special committee to oversee the appointment of a new health officer. Looking for a motion to take from the table so that we can discuss it.
So move Gross.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Zajak. I think I take the lead on this one, just to give a little bit of background. So this was, this motion was tabled. The, during the discussion of the, there was consideration to replacing Commissioner Drick.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Should we vote to take it off the table?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's, yes. Sorry.
We may not even vote to take it off.
Yes. Any discussion on taking it off the table? Okay. All those in favor of taking the motion off the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
We, it's taken off the table. I guess I should have a motion to, for, to, for this resolution to establish a special committee to oversee the appointment of a new health officer. Or did I already do that? I looked through the, do I need another motion? No. Okay. I will give a little bit of background just to get the discussion started. I, you know, this was tabled. Prior to tabling, there was discussion about replacing Commissioner Reader with Commissioner Drick at the request of Commissioner Reader. Since that time, you know, there's been some discussions about a couple items. One was to, to, you know, whether we should do a search that is, that we don't have to pay for. We would post it on our website for whatever the normal period of time is, you know, from our personnel director. And then I thought, there, I know I've had some discussion about changing the job description, adding a couple elements. One is making it an at-will position. I've chatted with our legal counsel. He says we can do that. The other was also change the job description whereby the new health officer, whoever that may be, would be required to initiate the process, enabling civil fines to be levied rather than, well, not rather, in addition to criminal penalties for violations of pandemic rules. So I want to talk about that, just a little bit of detail, because there's, there's a little bit of, I'll say, backstory behind that. So currently, state law only enables criminal penalties to be assessed if you don't, if a citizen doesn't follow the Health Department rules. And so that would go, be adjudicated by Circuit Court. That's how a citizen would get their due process if they were in disagreement with, you know, the quarantine orders of, of the Health Department. So however, civil fines can be enabled under certain circumstances. Those certain, they are spelled out in law that, what would have to happen is the health officer would have to make a request to the Board of Commissioners to set up the rules and regulations for assessing civil penalties. Other counties have, have done that. Washtenaw County has done that. Ingham has done that. So the rationale is that you have two, two routes to go, you know, either criminal or civil. It depends on the severity, you know, who would make the call on whether it gets a civil penalty or criminal penalty? It would be up to the health officer, but the health officer has two, two avenues. And what I personally see beneficial for citizens is the civil penalty. Say, say a civil penalty is assessed by the Health Department for $500 or $1,000 fine. The citizen has the opportunity to appeal that fine. It doesn't have to get a lawyer, doesn't have to pay for a lawyer. It can, makes the appeal, the first appeal goes to the health officer. So the Health Department, if they assess a fine, then the first appeal goes to the health officer. The second, there is a second, and actually, there's three appeals. The, the second appeal, if, if they weren't, if the citizen wasn't satisfied by the health officer, would be an appeal to the Board of Health. In Livingston County, the Board of Health is our general government and Health and Human Services Committee, a committee of four commissioners. And I see big advantages, you know, that the decision in this appeal is in the hands of people that are accountable to the voters. In, and so we have the interest of, I say, the better have the interest of justice in mind. If, and I make this point, I made this point to other people. If civil penalties were available in the pandemic, and, and I happen to be on the general government and the Health and Human Service Committee, and there were penalties being assessed for keeping healthy kids out of school, I would have voted to, you know, in favor of the appellant and cut the fines to zero or a penny. That, that's me. That's, I, unfortunately, I was, I wouldn't be on, as the chair of the board, I wouldn't be on any specific committee. But we do have the ability as elected folks representing the people to assert our judgment into this whole situation. A third appeal exists, and that would be going to Circuit Court. So anyway, the, we as the Board of Commissioners cannot institute this on our own. We, it has to be specifically requested by the, the health officer. So anyway, there, I've had conversations with a couple of Commissioners on this topic. And I throw that out there is to just start the discussion on what we want to do as a board moving forward and the selection of a health officer. So with that, I'll yield the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Helserman.
I think that right now, we do have an interim health director, Matt Bowling. He's been appointed by our administrator. So I think that we do have some time here. It seems to me there, there's changes that you are proposing that are best dealt by, with, by the Personnel Committee. Different description of the position and different things of that nature, I think. And, and a method of going forward. It seems that we already have a committee. This, the resolution that we're talking about deals with setting up another committee outside of the Personnel Committee to do this work. It seems to me that we have the Personnel Committee to, to vet these ideas and then bring them back to the board for another, you know, discussion. In my mind, I don't know how I'd make a motion to that effect, but I would, I would move that we that we send this resolution and the whole matter back to the Personnel Committee for, for review and, and recommendation. That's my motion.
Just for clarification, are you making a motion to amend this resolution? So that we are basically going to have the Personnel Committee handle the, the process?
Either way, I, you know, I don't know if we want to send this resolution back to the committee or, or set this one aside and, and give, because this resolution sets us up another committee, and I would say let us not set up another committee. Let us send the whole matter to an existing committee.
Okay. What, what I would ask, then, let's have a vote on, let's, let's hear from other Commissioners that want to chime in on the discussion. And then if it's the will of the board to vote this resolution down, and then I would commit, you know, as the chair of the board, I'll just send it, send it to Personnel, because that, actually, I think that Personnel Committee is, is the appropriate place for sure to talk about the job description and any changes to that. And then the Personnel Committee could handle the process of, of the appointment of the health officer. So is there, is there further discussion on?
Mr. Chairman, I believe our legal counsel was trying to get our attention.
Was that Matt?
Yes. Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The order that you're handling this is fine. I just wanted to comment that if it was a motion to commit or refer to a committee, that that would be in order as well, if that's what Commissioner Helserman's motion was, is an intervening motion. Either, either process, the one that you've described, or his motion would be appropriate here.
Okay. Any, does anybody, Commissioner Gross.
I would be in favor of sending this back to the Personnel Committee. However, I'm a little bit concerned that Personnel Committee is made up of only four Commissioners. In just this night, this, within the last 10 minutes, we've been introduced to the concept of changing the job description and dealing with civil penalties. And I, for one, feel that the community has dealt with enough stress on this issue over the last two years. There's no way in the world I would agree to civil penalties of any kind going forward. But I think this needs to be discussed further. And hopefully, the Personnel Committee can do an adequate job with that, my comments.
And other Commissioners? Just Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, just a clarification, and maybe our legal counsel is the right person to ask, but aren't all our county employees that are not elected at will?
I can answer part of that question. The, the job description of the health officer, I've read through the job description. It does not say that it is an at-will position.
Are there others? Do we know?
Mr. Norford.
So, Mr. Chair, in response to that, the vast majority of our union represented employees are not at will. They are just cause employees. And unless we have an employment contract with an individual or collective bargaining agreement, everyone else, to my knowledge, who is a county employee would be at will.
So you're saying it does not explicitly need to be there?
No, it certainly can be there. It, it, the standard would be an at-will employment unless there is something to the contrary. So having it, having it be in the job description would be typical in my estimation.
Other questions, Commissioner Smith? That's what I thought. The other Commissioner.
Put my two cents in.
Commissioner Reader.
I think it belongs to Personnel. We're skirting around what we've already put together as a protocol for following what we're doing with these things. And there's now issues on the table that are new, and I think should go through Personnel before we do anything else.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Griffiths.
I agree. This has to go back to Personnel because now we've got a whole new dynamic here that we haven't really vetted or talked about. And if we're talking about changing job descriptions, it needs to go back to Personnel.
Commissioner, Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for Mr. Norford. If, if Commissioner Helserman withdrew his support for the motion, would that undo the discussion and allow the chair to assign the issue to Personnel without a vote?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, Commissioner Helserman, if, if you're interested.
If that's what the chairman will do, I withdraw my motion.
You'll go to Personnel. So you withdraw your support for the motion? All right.
So I just want to be clear for the records. Are you withdrawing your motion to send to Personnel? Or you're withdrawing your support for Resolution 2206095?
To go to Personnel, because that was, that was, my motion was to send it to Personnel. Because I, because we took it off the table, so we, we didn't have to re, remove the, the motion. It was brought back on the table with this original.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So there, there was no support for Commissioner Helserman's motion. I think what Commissioner Zajak was referring to, and what I understood it to be, was a request for Commissioner Helserman to withdraw his support for the resolution from the June 27th meeting.
Okay, so I was a supporter of that. Yeah, I will, I will remove my support.
Correct. That, that motion was moved by Commissioner Plank, supported by Commissioner Helserman.
Okay, yeah, I removed my support.
Okay. Who made the motion?
No, this is the last, we're talking about the table that was motion that was made in our last Commissioners meeting. That's what Mitch is speaking about. So we're not talking about an action that happened tonight. We're talking about action that happened two weeks ago when this was tabled. So, so when it comes back to the table, it comes with its original motion and its original second. And that is the second that I'm withdrawing from the, from what I made. So the original, the original motion has no standing now.
Okay, I got it. So without support, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item.
So have you, you've assigned it to Personnel?
Yes, yes. Item number nine on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support Helserman.
By Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. First up on the agenda is reports. We have this evening a report from Michigan Works, an annual report, and then after Michigan Works, any reports from Commissioners. So Mr. Shamar Heron from Michigan Works, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, or excuse me, good evening, Commissioners, morning, evening, what day of the week? I'm starting to lose track here, but either way, it is a pleasure and an honor to be presenting in front of you again how quickly a year goes by. I assume that you all have a copy of the presentation that we're getting ready to give. Last year, it was available on screen. Is that the same for this year, or should we work from our notes?
I do not have anything to put it on Zoom unless somebody else has that. I would say we cannot share it on Zoom.
Keith? Somebody want to share the screen on?
It's on the agenda. If anybody wants to show their agenda, you know, share their agenda, so we can do it.
Give me just a few minutes. I will get that up.
Not on Zoom, so.
Just give us a minute.
No problem. We have it here in front of us, but for consideration of the members of the audience and of those on Zoom, we'd like them to be able to see it as well.
I've got it on my computer, but I don't know how to share.
I have mine up. Can you see that in the boardroom, Commissioners?
Looks like it's loading. Yep. I want to make sure our communications team gets the credit due that we have a whole new visual experience starting this year. So you all are the second set of Commissioners to see it, and we're quite proud of it. So thank you, magical person behind the screen who helped us to give props to our communications team. So again, good evening. I am Shamar Heron, Executive Director of Michigan Works Southeast. These are some of my more proud moments, not where I stick my chest out proud, but just extremely elated about the work that we do as your workforce development agency. With me this evening, I have Mr. Tom Robinson. He is our manager of business. With me this evening, I have Mr. Tom Robinson. He is our Manager of Business Services. We also have Misty Shulters, who is my Trustee Deputy Director, and I am asking that you all keep Dawn Ari, our local Michigan Works Service Center Manager, in your thoughts. She is under the weather, but she sends her best to the entire Commission. So I want to talk a little bit about who we are and then give you a little bit of additional kudos, move into what we've done over the last year. A couple of highlights that I'm going to turn it over to Tom. After that, Tom will give his piece around business services. Misty Shulters will come in and talk about some of the operational highlights over the last year here in Livingston County. And then we'll close up. We learned last year that we took too much time, so we've brought pulled it together this year. All righty. So if we could move to the next slide, as you know, Michigan Works Southeast, we cover five counties. Those counties include, of course, Livingston, but there's also Hillsdale, Jackson, Linnaway, and Washtenaw Counties. That population is represented by almost eight hundred and sixty-five thousand people across that five county region. It's three hundred and fifty square miles. And we fill it every month as we turn in our transportation or travel reports. Four hundred and fifty thousand people, almost in our labor force, four hundred and forty-five to be exact. And twelve percent of that population is below the poverty line. About thirty-five percent, which is down from the last Alice report, is part of the Alice population, so I give kudos to you all as I think you did drop an additional percentage point or two in our in your Alice population. And lastly, about thirty-seven percent of workers in the region travel more than thirty minutes to work. Fifteen percent travel more than sixty minutes. We keep that stat in there so that not only you all as decision makers in counties, but for our employers to understand that people travel. We see county lines, but the job seekers, they see dollar signs. They want to make sure they're maximizing their opportunity across the region. So on the next slide, we'd like to personally thank you all as a Commission for sending over two very helpful and thoughtful and smart individuals in Commissioner Housman and Commissioner Zajak. They represent Livingston County on our Consortium Board. We want to make sure that you understand the primary functions and responsibilities for that board is to administer our funds as a fiscal agent, also as our employer of record officially. That Consortium Board is our administration board for all other intensive purposes. They approve all contracts, and like I said again, they are our employer of record. So back in two thousand sixteen, we became one organization, but we had a third party employer of record. As of two thousand twenty, Michigan Works Southeast Consortium employs all seventy-seven individuals within our organization. And so we want to thank you for those contributions. If we're going to look back over last year, the year of two thousand twenty, our numbers, we're proud of them, but they're nowhere near where they were pre pandemic. We saw an eighty-five percent reduction in foot traffic in each of our service centers. So Washtenaw being our busiest service center, we would see two hundred and fifty people a day. Right now, we're happy if we see about thirty-five to forty people a day. So, next slide, please. That helps you understand why these numbers, when you see people served in twenty-eight hundred or so, that number was fifteen thousand two years ago, so or two and a half years. So there has been a shift. But we do see a resurgence happening. So we are now starting to see more people. Week by week, our numbers are growing, and we're continuing to do the outreach that's necessary. You can see on your left hand side some of the breakdown. We try to stay away from jargon in situations like this, but we want you to see who the program participants are. And I want to quickly deviate and ask, have you all heard about what's happening with Wagner Pizer, which is our Employment Services Funding Source? So what I would like to do is send over some information for you all to review and consider taking up a special resolution when you all have the ability and the time to consider opposition to a proposed rules change that is happening at the federal level around Wagner Pizer funding. Wagner Pizer funding primarily funds the individuals that you see when you walk into our service centers. They also affect Tom's work, and there is a proposed rule change that takes it from being local staff to state staff. That would be approximately a one point two million dollar reduction in our budget. It's less about the money and more about the impact of the Livingston community that would be felt. The individuals would deal with one front, front desk worker opposed to the multiple people we have who can work our front desk here in Livingston County. So we'll send over more information with some details that will allow you to understand exactly what's going on. And then you all can consider a resolution helping us send over to our delegation, both federally and statewide. You can see some of the other numbers. Our total visitors are almost four thousand, and we're at about almost five hundred businesses served, so we're really proud about that. If you can move on to the next slide, please. A couple of organizational highlights. So philosophically, we're starting to move away from what we were doing in the past in terms of how we engage our businesses. So Tom's team is still going to continue to work here locally and make sure that each business in Livingston County that's reaching out for services has someone, but we need to start looking at industry collaboratives. So what's happening in healthcare? What's happening in information technology, manufacturing? I don't know, Tom, what's another one we're considering? Healthcare hospitality. So there are a variety of industries, and there's collaborative work that can happen where we bring many businesses together and make industry-wide changes opposed to a policy that may help one or two businesses. We're trying to affect industry and apprenticeships. We're going to let Tom talk about apprenticeships. I don't want to steal too much of his thunder. So that's philosophically, an event that we're really proud of that happened back in May was Careers of Today and Tomorrow. That was held at the Hudson Science Center down in Hudson, Michigan. We understand that there were a couple, that your ISD or your LES A did contribute, but they were quite clear. That's a haul for them to go from what I'll say way up here in Livingston County, all the way down to almost Ohio-Indiana border for that experience. But we did have engagement from LES A, and we're very thankful. Lastly, is my internship prep. This is a preparatory course where students can make up to a thousand dollars based on working three weeks for about ten hours a week where they're able to learn what it means to get ready to go to work. So you see the word prep in there. Their internship is preparing for work. So we teach them some of the A's like attitude, attire, attendance. We make sure that they understand what it's going to look like when they enter the workplace, opposed to putting them in a position and then trying to work step by step with them. Because there isn't a new age, a new young person. I'd be surprised if any of us have seen different. The way they approach work and what they're looking for out of employment has changed significantly from what I remember and what some of you remember. And the only example I can give is who remembers the paper boy? Right? Most of us, right? Or paper person, excuse me, right? How many of us see a paper person now? How many of us have read a physical paper in the last week?
Okay, pretty good.
Pretty good, right? But times are changing, right? And that was a job you could get at twelve years old. That no longer exists. So we have to address our young people in a very specific way. I've talked way too long. Tom is up next with the next slide for Business Services. And after him, Misty Shulters will come up.
Thank you, Shamar. Commissioners, in Business Services, we have had an exciting year, and it's been our pleasure helping local businesses build resiliency by connecting them to services that lead to a better future. How are we doing that? So we're doing that with training grant opportunities, apprenticeship expansion and development, and it's been, as Shamar mentioned, a major focus of ours. I'll talk more details of that in a moment. Industry sector collaboratives to solve common problems, to bring a common voice to a group or a group of businesses in a similar or same sector by doing job posting assistance and talent sourcing and other services. Next slide, please. So speaking of grant training, one of our programs that we have is the Going Pro Talent Fund Program, which is a competitive state grant annually. And in the current year in Livingston County, and the Livingston County businesses are actively engaged in this grant opportunity. We had eighteen successful applications that we submitted to the state for a total of six hundred ninety-two thousand and change. And that is a large portion, the largest portion of all of the funding that Michigan Works Southeast receives for its five counties come to Livingston here. So congratulate your businesses on their their engagement and the accuracy of the applications that they file with us and the state for access for those training funds. Next slide. So the Going Pro Talent Fund is an annual competitive grant. The Incumbent Worker Training Program is another grant that we offer, which is a once a year grant opportunity that businesses can apply for, and we have had three of your area businesses apply for and receive those funds in the last year. Those are the Work Skills Corporation, who had fifteen trainees for six thousand dollars, almost seven thousand dollars. Concept Alloys had five trainees for ninety-one hundred dollars. Aludine had eight trainees for eighty-nine hundred dollars for a total of twenty-eight trainees and twenty-five thousand dollars in total using that program. Next slide, please. New apprenticeship programs. We have recently created a new position on the team to strategically focus on apprenticeship programs throughout the five county region. We are very excited that we have gotten four new apprenticeship apprenticeship programs in place this year, and those are Cobra Moto, which is an additive manufacturing technician, which is three D printing technology, Veritas, which is a or a restaurant type organization down in the Jackson area where they've done a cook hotel restaurant apprenticeship, a chef cook apprenticeship, and a manager of food services apprenticeship. And we haven't made a formal announcement on this one, but this one got over the finish line in the last week, which is a Flying Outer Winery, which is a wine maker apprenticeship. And those are non-traditional apprenticeships that we're really proud to be helping businesses get over the finish line just this year. Next slide, please. And we've got a lot in the pipeline. So in development, we have a graphic with Graphic Media Alliance, which is an offset press operator apprenticeship. We're working with them on. Gerber Collision is working on auto body technician apprenticeships. Annaber Housing Authority is working on the maintenance technician program. Sold-in senior services on a long-term caregiver's apprenticeship program and a organization called Me and My Squeegee working on a professional window washer apprenticeship program. So in a tight labor market, retaining the staff you have is a good strategy, and doing so through an apprenticeship is a good way to approach that. Next slide, please. Shamar talked about industry sector collaboratives. You have an active collaborative here in Livingston County, and that is a manufacturing collaborative. The employer champion of that collaborative is Aludine, and as you can see, there's a number of members as part of that collaboration. And the partners in that, leading that are the Annaber Spark Organization, along with Michigan Works Southeast. One of the things that they were recently doing as a project is virtual learning using an Oculus system. So those businesses had a common training program that they could apply to each of their organizations. It was in the repair of a machine that would go down, teaching the machine operator to do low-level repairs on that. So they were doing virtual training through Oculus to facilitate that.
Really quickly, everyone familiar with the Oculus, the goggles that you see commercials for, it is really cool. They really had me believe that I was changing oil.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So employer talent sourcing. So another service we offer is helping businesses source and find talent. Here you see listed a number of employer of the day events that we've hosted at the local new service center here in Livingston County. You can see that there were, I think, seven of those so far this year, and we have one upcoming scheduled for this week, July thirteenth. And that's when an employer comes in, sets up a table, we advertise that. As we get walk-ins into the facility, we connect them with the employer, and they potentially conduct an onsite interview right there. Next slide, please. And it wouldn't be a presentation without a success story. So Concept Alloys, we recently worked with them. They produce tungsten and I'm not going to attempt that other word, but a type of a thermal couple wire and other high-performance alloys. They needed to increase their employing knowledge and improve quality to ultimately achieve an ISO nine thousand one certification. So through a training grant program, we assisted them in providing five people a total cost ninety-one, ninety-one hundred dollars, and that is currently being conducted by MMTC, and that training is currently in progress. Questions? Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
All right. Well, thanks, Tom. Good evening. Again, Misty Shulters, Deputy Director with Michigan Works Southeast. So I'm going to take a minute to talk about our job seeker services. So we have all these great opportunities with our employers, but we have job seekers that we are working to prepare to make that match. So next slide. These are just a few of the ways we go about preparing our individuals for those employment opportunities. So training is one of our biggest resources and services that we can provide, and what we're able to do is we're able to do a lot of assessments on the front end and make sure individuals are connecting to training opportunities that match their academic ability as well as their interest, because we all know if you love the job you're doing, it doesn't feel like a job in the morning, right? So we'll go through that with them, career coaching and connecting the individuals to labor market information. So again, making sure that we're connecting them and they're spending their time training for an opportunity that's going to be there and be available. And we use a lot of data to help drive those decisions. Paid work experience is another great service that we provide, and so that allows an individual to try out a job where the employer on record, they're able to try it out, practice their skill set, and really it gives them a chance. You know, one of my favorite stories is we had an individual who couldn't decide between accounting and wanting to be a veterinarian. So we used our paid work experience opportunity for them to do eight weeks at the Humane Society, and they quickly, after about six weeks, said, I cannot stand the smell of the animals. So that that was enough for them to know. I don't want to invest time and money into becoming a veterinarian. They went along the accounting route, right? And we were able to connect them with a local accountant, and they were able to get into the numbers. So one of my favorite services, and then Tom talked a lot about apprenticeships, and then adult education services. And so we help with remediation and with those individuals that are working to complete their high school equivalency, we can connect them to partners that are able to provide that service to help give them that leg up. Next slide, please. So we are super proud of our new location at twelve hundred Byron Road. If you've not had an opportunity to stop in and tour the service center, please do so. It is fantastic. We're really excited about its modern look. And Dawn Ari, who was pictured there with Shamar, the ribbon cutting that we had in May, it was fantastic. It was. It's a really great space. So I do again encourage you to come in and and see. They love to show it off, and they usually have some snacks too. So if you like cookies, it's a good time.
Commissioners who were able to show up for that open house.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So just a couple of local things that are happening at Dawn's Service Center. So we had a four-week virtual skill building with the completion of a portfolio. So that's a lot of that my internship program that Shamar was speaking to on the front end of this presentation where we can get them connected to that information to prepare them for employment. We talked about the first paid work experience. So we had one with the Sheriff's Office, and that one did complete with employment with the Sheriff's Office for that youth. So it was a great connection. And then with the Clean Slate Pilot Program, we've been able to do an expungement clinic. We held that in March, partnering with the Public Defender's Office and a few other community partners to help individuals with their set aside application process. Next slide, please. And then we love telling the stories of our job seekers. So this one right here is Alex and Chance. So both of them came to us with basic skills deficiency. They struggled to complete high school. It just wasn't something that they were engaged in. We were able to connect them with those remediation services that I spoke of and then trained them in CDL and heavy equipment operator, and they were able to obtain their OSHA safety certificate. That helped both those individuals connect to sustainable employment that is going to give them that leg up in the future. Through that time, we were able to connect them with mileage reimbursement so that the cost of getting back and forth to the training was not keeping them from from completing successful, along with a variety of other supportive services to get them through. So what we love about that is when our individuals refer folks back to us, right? They had such a good. They had such a good experience, and we were able to help them, that they've sent a lot of folks our way. Next slide. So, just a couple other job seeker success stories. This individual, Keith, again, CDL license, that's a top-demand career right now, and we're seeing a lot of requests for CDL licensing. So, we're able to assist with the cost and support them as they go through that training to get that credential. So, we also have Brandy, who did a career transition, and she worked with Patty out of our office to help her take her experiences she had previously, redo her resume, and get her connected to new opportunities. And so, that career transition in the, you know, in your forties and fifties, that's tough. And so, we were able to help that individual make that jump.
So, we'd like to talk about collaboration and not just what we do with our job seekers or with our businesses in the community, but with you all as a commission, right? So, we want to make sure you understand, we are a resource that is here for you. And so, some of the questions, if you could go to the next slide, please, is, do you know of a business that is in need? So, Tom talked about just some of the resources that we can offer to our business community. So, please don't be shy or hesitant about referring businesses. It doesn't matter what type of business. Let us sift it out on the back end, whether we make sense or Ann Arbor Spark makes sense or MMTC. Just send them our way, because we are trying to get our foot traffic and our engagements back up to pre-COVID levels. Do you know of a career seeker, right? So, maybe you heard someone in your family, maybe while you were out in your districts, you hear people saying, "Man, I'm really looking for employment opportunities." We have probably ten times the number of employers and positions for every one job seeker. So, there is a lot of opportunity out here. I'm sure you know that, being in county government. I'd love to chat with your HR director to hear how they're going and how work is going in terms of recruitment and retention. It's just a really tight market, but we have access to those positions.
Yeah, and just, you know, too, the, are you working with others on a major project? So, remember, we're workforce development, but a lot of times the most successful projects have a lot of resources together, right? To be able to provide that holistic service. So, if you're thinking of a project that's coming up, or you know of one that's in the pipeline, just reach out, let us know, and we'll navigate that.
And we sit on your human services boards. We work with your human service agency. So, we like to consider ourselves the great connector within community resources.
Same goes for community events. We love to pop up a tent. We love to meet people, share our services, and be of help. So, if you know of anything like that, or it makes sense for us to be there, absolutely reach out.
And the way you reach out, next slide, is here's all of our information. So, if you need any of us, it's right there in your packet. Please don't hesitate. We are here as a service to you, and we want to maximize that collaboration and partnership. So, we thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions you may have.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Gross.
I guess question for you, Misty. What are you seeing as, I guess, deficiencies with respect to high school graduates? Do they really have the tools they need to be able to find a fit? Or are you seeing little behind in some areas and that they really need to brush up on their educational situation?
Yeah, sure. So, strangely enough, most of what we're seeing are those soft skills that a lot of individuals take for granted. So, the ability to carry on a conversation. Unfortunately, everybody's pivoted to this tech world, where they are sending shorthand texts or emails. And so, when it comes to an interview, they don't know how to advocate for themselves and to really communicate how they're a good fit for the role. We often also see where they just, there's this instant gratification, right? And there's a lot of theories out there why everyone feels like today they need to be the CEO. They don't want to, you know, put that effort in to get there, right? The internet has been one of those theories where you can hop right on and get what you need. Two days, Amazon, one day if you live in a metro area, right? So, just helping them understand that it's a journey, and each step of that process adds to their ability to just enhance and grow. And so, a lot of it is coaching and soft skills that we work on. I'll be honest, our employers right now are saying, "If you can get us somebody who can work in a team and can effectively communicate, we will train the rest of that," right? We'll work with you on some of your grant opportunities. We'll get them the technical skills. We just need someone to come to the table who has that motivation.
And if I may, one other piece, critical thinking. So, if something happens where you have to pivot on the spot, we need to increase their ability to think critically.
Any other commissioners with? Commissioner Smith?
Quickly, how long does the paid work experience go for? Is it a couple of weeks?
We can do a paid work experience up to sixteen weeks. And then considering the situation, we may potentially be able to do it a bit longer than that too, just given the circumstances.
And is there any collaboration with the veteran services?
Yes, we work very closely. So, we have a veterans career advisor that is actually stationed at our Livingston office, I think, two days a week. And they're just a part of our team, a very integral part of our team. And so, yes, we do communicate with them and work well.
R.I.P. to Sean Sims, who was one of our veteran services given to us by the state. He passed in the last three weeks. Right? And so, I'd be remiss if not, this is my first public forum since learning of his passing and his service. So, you know, military veteran of the Marine Corps, and we lost a very good soul three weeks ago.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time. Any reports from commissioners this evening? Commissioners, A.Jak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, in line with the presentation we just had. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with MEDC as well as the Brighton Explorer Program, talking about opportunities in our county. And through conversation with Spark and MEDC, we don't have a mega site available in Livingston County, which would bring hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs in our area, which I think there's opportunity for. So, that meeting is just to explore the roadblocks, the hurdles. And we saw the presentation that there's fifteen percent of the people are driving sixty minutes to work. I wonder how many we could keep around here or bring in to work here with the right opportunities. So, once I get that, I'll follow up with you guys too, by the way, and see how synergies might exist there. But that's the first report. The second report is, as the commissioners know, they're working on this, I'll say ad hoc educational group, if you will. That has kind of spun into bigger picture thinking, and it also parallels some of the comments we heard today about opportunities for internships, opportunities for exposure to work experience, so they can figure out if they're going to be a veterinarian or an accountant when they grow up. Those are two very diverging opportunities. But nonetheless, there's a group of very interested individuals in that community that would like to see that gap bridged for all students in Livingston County. So, again, as that develops too, I will bring updates to the commission. So, official commissioner business, but it's something I think we should all be interested in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other reports? Looks like no. So, we'll go ahead and close reports, and we'll move on in the agenda to resolutions for consideration. The first resolution, twenty-two-two-dash-zero-six-dash, or zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-six is a resolution to conditionally approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five multi-year plan of the Area Agency on Aging Region 1B. Is there a motion?
Move for discussion, Helsmer?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Helsmer and support by Commissioner Zajak. The, this was talked in about committee, but other commissioners want any more background information? We have Jenny Jarvis is with us on Zoom. I want to make a comment. The, I had an extensive conversation with Ms. Jarvis on Friday. She wanted to convey that, because it was, she had stated, it was mentioned somewhere in the meeting, the committee meeting, that it was stated that, you know, there was concern about, you know, people, I'll say, jumping the line. If there were services, if there was a backlog of services, would people get treated fairly or differently based on their demographic group? Ms. Jarvis assures me that, you know, once somebody has been identified in need of a service and that AAA-1B can deliver that service, it didn't go in any first-come, first-served basis. So, I thought that was important to share with commissioners. So... Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Helsmer.
We had quite a discussion about DEI in their approval of their multi-year plan. DEI is mentioned at least six times. And I just wanted to make some further comments on DEI. I made comments about AAA-1B, that they're a very well-run organization, and they have a, they provide service to many poor people that are very necessary. And I think that when you're dealing in real life, DEI has to take a backseat, because you're dealing with real people, and you want to deal with them in the best way possible. And so, even though, you know, DEI is a big thing, and there's a lot of training about it, I think in the actual delivery of services, that is not a difficulty. But I'd like to make some general comments. First of all, DEI is similar in my mind to the golden rule. Well, the golden rule is a universal principle, and everybody understands it. But the golden rule, you must think to make it happen. Must think about yourself. You must think about others. DEI, as I have read about it and thought about it, it is an emotional appeal with undefined terms. Diversity. Okay, how do you define diversity? Diversity is, how much do you include? Do you include everything? Are there things you ought not to include? So, diversity gives the idea that everything is acceptable. It's kind of like on Facebook. The thing I didn't like about Facebook is you only can like. You know, you can dislike with comments, but you only can like. So, it's a one-sided, it's a one-sided thing. Inclusion, what do you include? Well, there's no definition of inclusion. Do you include everything? Nobody includes everything. And so, there, in my mind, it is an ideal that is unachievable. And what you'll find out is what I found anyways, and maybe you'll find out too, is that there's two old words that you need to think about in relationship to that. One is outcome, and the other one is opportunity. DEI always are looking at the outcome. And you, you take any ten people, and you run them in a race, there's going to be ten different outcomes. You can never equal the outcomes. You give all your children the same amount of money, at the end of the week, they all have a different amount of money, and they have a different value in how they spend it. The outcome, there's always room for envy when you look at outcome. Therefore, you know, that's why I think it's false. And I predict that in the next ten years, the DEI will, people will see through it anyways. And so, but I'm happy that we talked a little bit about it in our resolution, and I support this. But I think we have to think about it too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Drick?
Are we committing to the county match that was talked about on some of the spreadsheets? Because it seemed, my recollection is that the county match was talked about as two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. And my first question is, there are a lot of counties. Maybe we have a portion of that, or maybe that was for us. Are we committing budget numbers? Are we committing money by approving, or?
No, the vote on the multi-year plan has no monetary consequences.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross?
I believe in the question of county match of funding, I think our administrator, Nathan Bird, sent something out in the past week or so that the county has historically contributed about twelve thousand dollars a year. And that expenditure would be covered in the budget process and would be voted on later in the year.
Thank you. Anybody else? We do have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution passes. Next up is twenty-two-two-dash-zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-seven. It's a resolution to concur with the Livingston County Aeronautical Facilities Board to enter into an easement agreement with DTE Energy to provide electrical service to the Consumers Energy gas valve at the corner of Burkhart and Bowen Roads. Is there a motion?
Support, Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. This was talked about in committee. Is there any follow-up questions from commissioners? Looks like none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. The next up is twenty-two-two-dash-zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-eight. It's a resolution to concur with the Livingston County Aeronautical Facilities Board to enter into a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation to fund crack ceiling at the Livingston County Airport. Is there a motion?
So, move, Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. This was also talked about in committee. Is there any follow-up questions for the airport folks? Looks like not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is twenty-two-two-dash-zero-seven-dash-zero-ninety-nine. It's a resolution authorizing fiscal year twenty-twenty-three vehicle replacements leased through the county's partnership with Enterprise Fleet Management. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith?
Support, Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Reader. This is also one talked about in committee. Other follow-up questions from commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution passes. It's a resolution authorizing and concurring with an advance from the Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund to Livingston Number One Drainage District for the purpose of financing improvement costs. Is there a resolution?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Helsmer, support by Commissioner Zajak. Any follow-up questions from commissioners? Doesn't look like it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution passes. Next up is twenty-two-two-dash-zero- Resolution passes. Next up is twenty twenty-two dash zero seven dash one zero one. It's a resolution authorizing the Livingston County Treasurer to increase the impressed cash account for the Livingston County Clerk's election division. Is there a motion?
Motion Smith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. This was another one talked about in committee. Is there any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is twenty twenty-two dash zero seven dash one zero two. It's a resolution proposing House bills forty-seven twenty-nine, forty-seven thirty, forty-seven thirty-one, and forty-seven thirty-two impacting fees charged for the official records of the treasurer and register of deeds. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Helsner. This was also discussed. Is there more questions, comments? Commissioner Gross.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate, I may have missed something. But I, I think the very last paragraph where we read, be it further resolved, the copy be forwarded, et cetera, et cetera. I think it would be well if we could add to that Michigan Association of County Treasurers, Michigan Association of County Clerks, and Michigan Association Register of Deeds. Those organizations have been mentioned prominently in other similar resolutions from other counties. And we might be remiss if we don't include those folks. I don't know if that requires an amendment or just make sure that it happens.
Okay, our, our county clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Next up is twenty twenty-two dash zero seven dash one zero three. It's a resolution authorizing a second quarter budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Is there a motion?
Move the resolution, Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Griffith. Is there further discussion on this? Doesn't look like it. All those in, oh, this one needs a roll call.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank is absent. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nockit Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is twenty twenty-two dash zero seven dash one zero four. It's a resolution authorizing an amendment to the procurement policy. Is there a motion?
Move the resolution, Zajak.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Smith. Before I open up the discussion, I wanted to, my colleagues know that there was a, a change required. I had said on your D I S area, the, the proposed change, basically the resolution on the, the two pages I said in front of you, the first page is incorrect. The second page is correct. So the changes that are, that were made to the table of an information on the first page, you can see some red marks and some highlighted yellow. Those should not have changed at all. The only thing that this resolution is changing is the, the authorization from our county administrator. So the changes you see on the first column of that table, if you look to the second table, it's, there's no changes there. So that doesn't show up in the, the wording of the resolution, but it shows up in the attached information. Did I get that correct? Cindy? Yes.
Good evening. So the only change that was supposed to be made on the, on the procurement policy was authorization for the county administrator to increase from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand and ten percent to twenty percent. On the table, it was mistakenly increased all of the bid limits and the purchase order limits. So those remain the same. So we're reverting those back and we're just changing the authorization for the county administrator.
Do we need a motion for this or, or was the, the, actually, the, the motion is the second page, right? That's, that's the correct version.
Yes.
Of what the motion says. So we really don't need to change the motion? We don't need to, because was, was this first sheet part of the first motion? If it was, then we need to move that the second sheet is the correct one.
I would, I would say, so the first sheet, was it handed out in the agenda package as incorrectly? Because I received this, this afternoon, the correct version after the agenda package went out.
So there's no change to the resolution. It's just a change to the attachment on the policy. So if we can just correct that policy in the final document. I don't know that there actually needs to be any type of amendment. We just need to make that correction.
Okay, because we're changing the policy, therefore we need to amend the motion to reflect page two, and I will do so.
So there's a motion to amend, so it reflects correctly page two. Is there support?
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Gross. Commissioners Zajak.
Just for the clerks' clarity, so what are we changing in the resolution itself? This was just an attachment. This, the resolution says adjust the variance policy and that's what page two is. And there was just a mistake in the table, which has nothing to do with the variance policy. So I'm just, so we have an appropriate record. What are we changing in the resolution?
Is the actual table in the resolution?
No.
It's on the attachment.
There's a supporting document not in the resolution.
Is the amended? Okay.
But the, my, my question is, is it, when we approved it in committee, was this first thing with it? Was this, because this changes the policy here. Did we change, did we approve the change of the, this change of the policy in committee? I think if we, if we approve this policy change in committee, we all, we need to amend, amend what happened in, in the committee. That's my understanding.
Mr. Norford.
So I want to make sure I understood this. I believe the language of the resolution is unchanged. We're referring to the attachments. Is that correct? So Chair, my suggestion would be for you to say, without objection, we'll correct the attachment, but the resolution will remain as is for the purposes of the motion.
I can do that. So without objection, if I would like to correct the attachment and the motion will remain as is. I can repeat things pretty well. So I guess we don't need the amendment, but so.
Withdraw the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Resolution passes. The last resolution of the evening is twenty twenty-two dash zero seven dash one zero five. It's a resolution authorizing the Livingston County Board of Commissioners formal receipt review and annual filing of the Livingston County twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan as approved by the Livingston County Planning Commission. Move the resolution, Zajak. Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Reader. The, one commissioner expressed an interest in, is, who's here to speak on this? Rob. Wanted to see the, that wasn't here at committee, wanted to see the presentation. Okay. Share my screen here. Oh, I'm, I'm, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought the commissioner wanted to go through the the presentation, but I'm told that it went through the presentation. It said it was a good presentation, so I've. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry about that. My, my mistake.
That's okay. I was ready for you.
All right, we were testing you.
Yeah.
And you passed. So. Are there, any other questions and comments on the, Commissioner Zajak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo Commissioner Griffith's comments about the presentation was an excellent presentation. And I've spent more time digesting the book, which I think I made a misstatement in committee. I said it was three hundred pages long. It's one hundred and thirty-eight pages long. I was looking at Cindy's budget. But that's a little bit longer. But I will say that I, you know, upon further review, I think that this really can help drive commissioners with their, with their impetus for projects, having the expertise of our department heads kind of guiding the ship and then us investigating further and perhaps seeing where synergies work with, for instance, EMS and LETS or EMS and other departments with projects or the sheriff. Well, the sheriff has his own big list of projects, but it wouldn't be a meeting without poking fun at him. So anyway, this is a real opportunity for us to, to have real insight into the needs of our departments and help it guide our decisions as we go. So I just want to make sure it's publicly said again, Rob, fantastic job and your leadership on this and the rest of the members of the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Any, anything else for commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes. Item number twelve on the agenda or accounts payable reports. We have claims dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to pay the claims?
So move Gross.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Payables dated June eighteenth through July first, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioners Zajak, support by Commissioner Drick. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Item number thirteen is our second and final call to the public. Those wishing to address the board will have two minutes. All you have to do is state your name and your city or township.
I do have one card that was submitted for the second from Elisa Davis from the city of Brighton.
So we'll take Ms. Davis first.
I thought I'd just stop by, say hi regarding the exhaustive search and the, for the health department position. I don't know why you wouldn't just to rule out the fact that you may, you know, so that you don't miss anyone. Recommendations are lovely, but they're not everything. Secondly, and forgive me if I got this wrong, but when I was listening to the, the penalties, the criminal and civil penalties, from what I'm gathering, this applies to the citizens, not just the health department employees. So if that's the case, and it does apply to the rest of us, I would strongly remind the health department that their mandates are recommendations only. They cannot make laws. If anybody wants to make a law for criminal or civil penalties based on a medical reason, they can contact their legislator. That's what they're there for. We don't overreach here, at least last I looked, right? So I think that's all I've got. I promised other people I wouldn't swear, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Rengetti.
Thank you, commissioners. I find it mind-boggling. You guys all want to talk about holding citizens accountable for the plandemic. There's election fraud, twenty twenty, stolen elections, election fraud during Michigan, everything. Why aren't we talking about holding school officials, superintendents accountable for the illegal mask mandates, recommendations and everything else and the health department officials? There should be criminal investigations done. Why isn't the sheriff, undersheriff, prosecutor doing anything? And you guys want to talk about holding the Republican US Constitution people accountable for doing something that people like me, fellow frontline American doctors, and I seen the truth, right? You want to debate about what happened with the COVID? I will debate anybody who you want to bring up here. It was a plandemic, okay? My kids suffered mentally and physically at the hands of the school officials, being forced to wear masks, sent home healthy quarantines, and they lost education. You guys aren't even talking about the two years where our kids are falling behind on academics, right? You got people coming from the state, talking about getting jobs or anything. Let's talk about how two years that we lost from a plandemic, right? You look at the CDC about the monkeypox they just had up when they were going monkeypox, monkeypox. They put the mask mandate at the bottom of the website. Know what they're doing now? Oh, we called them out that you can't get monkeypox and the masks aren't going to stop it. What did they do? Oh, they took it off their website. When are we going to hold people, public officials accountable for the crap that we just went through with our kids? The psychological and trauma that they went through. But you guys want to talk about lobbying citizens? We are republic. We want limited government. We don't need no rules. The next time you guys get somebody in the health department, they better come here, show replicated scientific studies that if you're saying you need to wear a mask, show us the science. I have one hundred and sixty-nine cases that showed masks don't work. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? I don't see any hands. So I'm going to go ahead and call, call, close the call to, yeah. Close the call of public and look for a motion to adjourn.
So move Helsner.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Zajak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or adjourned?